Good evening, everybody.
Recording in progress.
Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of March 25th, 2025. I hope you will join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam City Clerk, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Feng.
Present.
Commissioner Linska.
Present.
Commissioner Sharif.
Present.
Vice Chair Kasolcharan.
Present.
Chair Rao.
Present.
All present.
Thank you, Madam City Chair. We have one item on the agenda. The first item on the agenda is our Planning Commission training. I want to welcome our guest speakers and see if staff would like to kick it off.
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we do have one item that is going to be a training that tries to cover about as much as you can in two hours. So it's going to start off, I think, more generally with the background on really how did urban planning come about? How did it evolve? The role of the Planning Commission? And then the latter half of the presentation will be a little more detailed on housing and in particular, recent housing laws and how that has affected planning processes in California. So with that, since we've got about two hours tonight, we have a presentation to get underway. I will turn this over to David Early, who is one of the founders of Placeworks, and Barb Cotts will follow David. She's with Goldfarb and Lippman doing the housing portion. So I'll hand it over to David.
Great. Thank you very much, Luke. Again, I am David Early with Placeworks. I'm the founder of our Northern California office. And I want to say at the outset, I understand that many of you were hoping to attend the League of California Cities Planning Commissioner Academy up in Sonoma a few weeks ago, and I am one of the presenters there. And so what I'm going to show you tonight is a lot of what you would have seen had you come to my presentation. So you didn't miss it all, as it turns out. You'll get at least a part of that tonight. We are going to ask you to hold your questions until both Barb and I have finished our presentations. There's a lot of material. We can certainly go back to the slides if you have specific questions, but I'd encourage you to write down any notes of questions you have, and then you'll be able to ask those at the end. And Pew is going to put the slides up for me. There they are. So I'm going to ask her to advance them. And the first slide, we can do the next slide just to give you an overview of the presentation I'll be making tonight, if we can have the next slide. And I'm going to be talking about the source of your power and the city's power to regulate land use. I'm going to talk about some of the regulatory and policy tools that you have in place. I'm going to talk about your role as a planning commissioner and some suggestions of how you all can conduct your business as planning commissioners. And then, as I said, I'll be turning it over to Barb for much more detailed information about the housing element. I'm happy to answer questions once we're into the Q and A about any of the items I talk about. Next slide. So land use regulation in this country isn't actually that old an idea, even worldwide. It was really at the very end of the 19th century and beginning of the 20th century, so just over 100 years ago, that we even began to have a concept about land use regulation. And this resulted from what at the time and historically has been called the good government movement, which was seeking to use government to create better society in general. And it was a response in particularly to the very unsanitary urban conditions that existed at the end of the 19th century. And you see a photo here of a bunch of trash piled in the middle of the street in an urban area. I think that's New York City, I'm not sure. But it was a mess in many cities, and there was a desire to rein in some of the excesses of the private market through government regulation. And the Constitution of the United States does give government the idea to regulate what's called with the police power, that's its name, which doesn't have to do with the police force of the city. But the police power is the power to regulate for health, safety, and welfare. And the courts have ruled that that is a power that devolves from the federal government down to the state government and then further to local government, and that as long as local government is trying to regulate health, safety, and welfare, you have the right to regulate land use and other aspects of daily life as well. So some of the key milestones that existed in the set of changes starting in the late 19th century. By 1909, the city of Los Angeles had the first zoning ordinance of any sort in the country, again, just over 100 years ago. It was a limited area that was about industrial uses. In 1916, the city of New York imposed the first comprehensive zoning ordinance. In 1922, the federal government created the Standard State Zoning Enabling Act. And in 1926, there was a very famous constitutional case going to the Supreme Court called Euclid versus Ambler that upheld the constitutionality of the idea of zoning. So that's only 99 years ago right now. And when we talk about zoning today, we often talk about Euclidean zoning. And when I was in planning school, I thought that had to do with some Euclidean construct of the world. But actually, it's not about Euclidean philosophy, it's about the city of Euclid, Ohio, and the fact that they were found to be in compliance with the Constitution, and now we refer to that as Euclidean zoning. So today, we have quite a number of land use regulations in the state of California. California has some of the, I would say, the best, but also the most complete and some would say egregious sets of regulations about planning in the nation. My company, for example, doesn't even try and work in other states. We focus just on California because the issues here are so specific and so unique to California. And despite all those rules and laws, Barb has on her desk all the California planning laws, which you can see how thick they are when you look at them all together. But in all those volumes, there's actually only two types of plans that are even defined in the law, and those are called general plans and specific plans. And I know you all use other types of plans here also, and we'll talk about those. But legally, the state law only defines these two types of law. The general plan lays out your overall vision for future development, how you're going to both allow development but also allow for conservation and maintenance of community character. And then the specific plan, which is a set of development standards applied to a more particularly geographic area within your jurisdiction. The zoning goes to implement those two types of plans, the general plan and the specific plan, and obviously you have an extensive zoning code here as well. And there are many other types of planning documents in various jurisdictions called master plans, area plans, vision plans, and so forth, but these are not defined in the law in any way. So sometimes somebody will call me up, a potential client will say, "Do you think I should do a specific plan or a master plan?" And my answer is really, "I don't know, because I don't even know what you think of as in a master plan." That's different from one community to the next. So it is important for you to understand that only the general plan and the specific plan have particular guidance around them, and all the other plans can be whatever you feel is appropriate. So if we can have the next slide, this does show you sort of the interaction among those plans. The general plan, you can see at the top of the pyramid, being the most long-term document and the most general document, and going into varying levels of specificity and detail through specific plans, things like coastal plans, your zoning, your design guidelines, and down to very short-term things like implementing a subdivision map or a development permit, a conditional use permit, and so forth. Those are much more detailed and much more site-specific. So this just shows you that range. The general plans are what we as planning practitioners call the bedrock of California planning. The Supreme Court once ruled that they are the Constitution for planning, development, and conservation. And one of the things I like to say is that just like the U.S. Constitution, unlike actually the California Constitution, but in the U.S. Constitution, you don't have every law in place, you have an overall framework, and then there are many other laws that support that Constitution. And the same is true of the general plan. The general plan, although it may be several hundred pages long, is only laying out your basic vision and your basic concepts, and there are many other specific types of regulations that exist in many other ordinances and regulations that you have that add specificity there. The general plan in that sense is providing an overall vision. It's a long-range vision, generally for 20 to 30 years. It should be the basis for your local land use decision and policies, and it does overall set the ground rules for planning. But again, it doesn't have every particular regulation in it. Many of those are found other places as well. Next slide. State law does require a total of seven elements in the general plan. They're called elements because you're actually not required to have them as individual chapters or to use that name, you just have to have them covered somewhere. Your particular general plan does have a land use element, a separately adopted housing element, and a mobility element. Your other elements, the ones on the second row that are also required, there's a requirement for a conservation element, which you do within your environmental resources and sustainability element. There's a requirement for an open space element, and that's taken care of by parts of your recreation and community services element. And then there are requirements for both a noise element and a safety element, and those are contained in what you call your health and safety element. So you have six elements there, and then you have one additional optional element. State law allows you to have any other elements you want beyond those seven. You have one more, and that's called the public infrastructure element. So like state law, you have a total of seven, but one of those that you have is not a required one, and the way you end up still at only seven is that you have two combined into a single chapter as well. But that gives you an overview there. Your general plan, we can go to the next slide. Your general plan is laid out in a way similar to many general plans that we work on at Placeworks. Your general plan has goals at the topmost level that tell what your desired outcome is for any particular issue. It then has a series of policies that are intended to guide action, both of staff and developers and your commission and ultimately the city council. And it has a series of strategies in it, which are specific tasks. Sometimes they're called programs, sometimes they're called actions. In your general plan, they're called strategies, but they do say specific tasks that will be undertaken by staff in order to implement the plan. And one of the things I like to say is that ideally, they have a beginning and an end. That is, that you can tell when you've done this task because it's finished. Sometimes you might see programs in a general plan that are more ongoing, but it's nice if those tasks or actions can be finite and finishable. But that is the overall organization that you have in all the elements of your general plan. Next slide. Wanted just to show you a couple of things, I'm sure many of you are very familiar with these, out of your general plan. One of the things I love about your general plan is that you do have, at the very outset, you have a community form diagram that talks about your overall vision for how development will occur and what places will change and what places will not change so much within the lifetime of this general plan. Setting that vision in a single diagram and with just a few words is really helpful for you and for others to understand what that general plan is about and where you're trying to head. And so this is that community form diagram out of the general plan. In the general plan itself, there's a lot of blue-gray boxes on the right side as well, which you may be familiar with, but I wanted just to zoom in on the diagram itself and congratulate you on having this very useful diagram within the general plan. The other thing, of course, that your general plan has is a land use map. This exists within the land use element, of course, and it sets the basic regulations of what types of development can occur within each of these colored areas. And I know you're quite familiar with this, but it does have the light buff color or yellow are the single-family residential neighborhoods, which are subject to very little change. And then in some of the reds and blues, we have the major corridors along Stevens Creek Boulevard, Deans, and so forth, and those are the areas that other parts of the general plan foresee having more change within them. You also have a mobility element. This is another very important element of the general plan, and pretty much every general plan will have a circulation network map within it. This is the map from your general plan showing the major freeways and expressways, the boulevards, which are the arterial streets, avenues, minor, both major and minor collectors, and then neighborhood connectors as well. And you can see these all laid out, and this is an important part of your general plan as well. Another third important element, of course, is your housing element. Barb's going to talk about that at length, which I'm very grateful for because it's an extremely technical issue, and you can probably tell from the way I'm talking, I don't do well with technicalities, but I like to talk about the big picture. The big picture on the housing element is that it does have to, by law, be updated every eight years. Every eight years, the state gives a housing allocation, first to the Bay Area region. As a whole, the Bay Area region divides that up among 100 cities and nine counties. You get an allocation, Barb will talk about that, and then you have to write a housing element that fulfills that housing allocation, and that's by law. And also by law, unlike any other element in the general plan, it's up to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, known as HCD, to certify your housing element. That is, to make a finding that you have in fact fulfilled all of housing element law. You are required by law to submit an annual progress report to the state on the implementation of your housing element. I know your staff does take care of that, but you do have to let the state know how you're moving forward and implementing that housing element. And again, you have to update it every eight years to fulfill that new housing allocation. It does have a set of very specific required contents that you see listed here. You have to do an assessment of housing needs, which is essentially existing conditions for housing. You have to identify specific sites at appropriate densities for housing. You have to have policies to facilitate housing development, and you have to have actions to remove barriers to housing production. And you have done all that, you have a certified housing element. Not every city in the Bay Area even has that. The fact that you've gotten across that finish line is really an excellent thing that you've managed to accomplish, and you have now set yourselves up for success to maintain that certification and implement the projects that are in the housing element. There are a number of other planning documents that you have here. I mentioned already that legally, the only thing that's really defined is a specific plan. You do have the Heart of the City specific plan, first adopted in 1995, and of course, it has within it the corridors along Stevens Creek Boulevard, West Stevens Creek Boulevard, the crossroads, Central Stevens Creek Boulevard, city center, and East Stevens Creek Boulevard. Every one of those has a set of specific development regulations and guidance within that Heart of the City specific plan. You also, of course, have the documents for the North and South Falco Planning Areas. Those are called master plans, and one of them was not actually adopted, but staff still uses it on an advisory basis. You have two conceptual plans for Deans Boulevard, again, not specific plans, but somewhat old, 1976 and 1985, but still on the books, setting conceptual guidance for the design of Deans Boulevard. You have a Sunnyvale, South Sunnyvale-Saratoga conceptual zoning plan that's a little farther south, and then also, of course, a wireless facilities master plan for this placement and regulation of wireless components, and the Montevista design guidelines that go back all the way back to 1978 but are still in effect as well. So these are other planning documents, one a specific plan and other types of plans that you need to follow as well because they are adopted plans of the city. You do, of course, also have a zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance is different from all these broader planning documents that I've been talking about in that it is the implementation document for development regulation and how development occurs. Zoning is the document that prescribes allowable uses and development standards, including things like building size, height, coverage setbacks, requirements for landscaping, signs and billboards, parking, and all sorts of other performance standards that exist all through your zoning code for all sorts of things, the keeping of animals, political signs, all sorts of things are covered within your zoning ordinance. Now, most of the zoning that we see still in California and in your own zoning code here is this thing that's called Euclidean zoning or traditional zoning. It is really based on the idea of separating uses, and that was very important, particularly in that history of planning I talked about, where you had industrial uses right next to residences and people really living under very unhealthy conditions. What we've seen over time, of course, is that all these very invasive and insidious uses, slaughterhouses, tallow plants, steel mills, those are less and less frequently found in our city areas, and so it's not as important to separate uses as it used to be. So this notion of focusing on uses and focusing on the separation of uses does exist in traditional zoning, it does exist to some degree in your zoning code, and it is a part of Euclidean zoning. If we go on to the next slide, though, we can talk about what's now called form-based zoning, which is another attitude towards zoning that focuses on building design en masse, the building scale, its relationship to public spaces, and design of streets in the public realm. Particularly in your Heart of the City specific plan, you have a lot of form-based ideas for regulation to try and make sort of more of a place, more of a there-there that people can really enjoy being in. And these parts of a zoning code are typically much more lavishly illustrated. The traditional zoning code or Euclidean zoning is usually a set of words. You see here on the picture, you see diagrams of how a building might meet the street, how it might look in its lot, what the actual design is, and these are typical issues that you will see in form-based zoning instead. Next slide. So that's it on planning documents. Hopefully, that was enough to at least whet your appetite, but I do want to move along and talk a little bit about the California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, as I think you all know it. SEQA is very important and I think often misunderstood in California. The most important thing to understand about SEQA is that it is a disclosing requirement. It is not an approval mechanism. It is only intended to inform decision-makers and the public about the environmental effects of a project. You have to disclose those effects, you have to make a finding that you agree with those effects, and you must, if possible, identify ways to avoid environmental damage that would come from a project and prevent it when it is avoidable. But you don't have to either deny a project because it would have environmental effects, nor do you have to approve a project because it would be found to have only mitigable environmental effects. It really is a disclosure document, and then it's up to you to make a decision about approval or denial of a project. Next slide. Under SEQA, again, it's a common misperception that every project that's subject to SEQA would require an EIR or environmental impact report, which is the highest level of report that's ever done under SEQA. There was a period of time in the perhaps 1990s and 2000s when we saw a lot of environmental impact reports. We're seeing fewer and fewer of them because the SEQA system has become more and more cumbersome. The state has really tried to help people, help jurisdictions, to find ways to do fewer full environmental impact reports. So the first thing that one looks at in any SEQA project is the possibility of exemption. And SEQA allows for over 30 different types of exemptions that are available if a project meets one of many criteria found in state law. And some of them are very specific, like I believe there's one, there's an exemption for any Olympics that might be held in Southern California in the year 2028. So if you happen to have one of those, you could exempt it as well, but you're unlikely to have that happen. But there are others that are quite broad, and one that's important to understand, and I always say this number wrong, but 1-5-1-3-8, I believe, is an exemption that says that if you have a general plan with an environmental impact report already in place, and you have a project that is consistent with that general plan, and there's nothing on the site that is, the word they use is peculiar to the site, then that project should be exempted under SEQA, and it should not need any further review. And in fact, there was a court case in San Diego that is published statewide, it's applicable statewide, just in the last month or two, that said that you actually must use that exemption. It's not optional, it's not a thing where you can say, "Well, I'd still kind of like an EIR, so even though I could exempt you, I'm going to require an EIR." You actually can't do that. The courts have said that if an exemption is available, you must actually use it. So that first level is the exemption. Beyond that, if you can't exempt the project, you always have to do a thing called an initial study, and the initial study results in one of two things. And I see heads nodding, I think many of you are familiar with this. In many cases, the initial study would result in what's called a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration. And these are documents, they're called negative declarations, not because we're in a bad mood today, but because they negatively find that no EIR is needed. So it's a negative declaration because you do not need an EIR. And the reason you do not need an EIR is either in a simple negative declaration, you find that the project would have no significant effect on the environment as proposed, or a mitigated negative declaration says, "There could be an environmental effect, but we can add some mitigation measures, and that will then avoid any substantial environmental impact." And so in either of those cases, whether you add mitigations or it's just a simple negative declaration, in both cases, you use your initial study to find that no EIR is necessary. And it's only after you've exhausted exemptions and exhausted the initial study and the negative declaration that you find, "Oh, we do think that there's likely to be a significant and unavoidable effect on the environment because we think that we're going to prepare an environmental impact report." And you can still prepare it only for those issues for which you think there could be a significant effect, or you can broaden that to be all potential effects, but many EIRs are actually focused, and they're called focused EIRs, on only those issues where the initial study found that there might be a significant effect on the environment. So those are all the different types of SEQA documents, and I think you can see from this that actually, in today's world, the EIR is not used all that frequently because of all the ways that we can move, either through a negative declaration or even through an exemption. So with that, I do want to talk now about your role as planning commissioners, and begin by just laying out the two basic things that you all do. And I'm sure you're very familiar with this, you've been doing it for a while, but it's important just to keep these two different functions that you have in mind. The thing you do kind of first, if you will, in setting the table for planning, is that you are the commission within the city that recommends to the council regarding long-range planning. And this is what I refer to as a legislative function, you are making the rules. You, along with the city council, are passing regulations through a legislative function to create plans, the general plan, the zoning code, and to both amend those documents and approve those documents as they're proposed, and that's where you set the rules through your legislative function. Now, once you've done that in that long-range planning function, the other function you have is what we call a current planning function, which is project-specific. This is an adjudicatory function. It's one in which you are looking at the rules that already exist, that were passed by you and ultimately the city council, and you're limited to looking at those rules and making a finding about a project, either to approve it or to deny it, based on the rules that are already in place. To do that, the first thing you do actually is you look at a SEQA document, if there is one, you look at the exemption, if it was proposed by staff, or you look at the initial study, the negative declaration, you certify that, or you certify a full EIR. Certifying that document doesn't mean you're going to approve the project, but you can't look at the project until you have some environmental finding that's legally valid. Once you've done that, you can review a project, and then ultimately you can consider approval or denial of a project. It's important to understand that that overall current planning function is really limited in general to discretionary projects that come before you because your codes say that there's something that you have to make a finding about as a commission. There are many projects today, particularly in housing, because of the way state law has changed over the last several years. Many projects are now what we call a ministerial project, which is to say that they can generally be approved by ministerial actions without your discretion, generally at the staff level. Now, here in Cupertino, there are times when ministerial projects come to your commission, particularly for review of objective design standards, but that, as staff has explained it to me at least, that's really a function for you to help make sure that they are meeting the objective design standards, and it's also a way to make sure that the public is aware of a project, but you cannot bring up other issues about the project. As long, if it is a ministerial project, you have to approve it, and the only question is to make sure that it does follow your design standards. And again, to make any of these findings, when a project comes to you, you have to make all your findings based on your adopted plans and regulations. So you have to be able to point at a regulation and say, "This is a part of the project that's not consistent with our regulations, this is the way to change it." And either the applicant has to change it, or the project will be denied. And you do have to provide the opportunity for the applicant to change the project as opposed to simply denying it without a further discussion. So those are a set of sort of regulations, if you will, around that current planning function that you have. So going from here, I just want to have a few more slides about the other parts of your role as a planning commission. I've just now concluded the part of the presentation that I gave up in Santa Rosa a few weeks ago, and I was very happy to have Seema Patel, who some of you may know, she's a planning commissioner nearby in San Mateo. She's an extraordinary woman, works at Google and doing something that I don't even understand what it is. She's like the lead for local experience or something. She said the job, and I was like, "What does that even mean?" But if you work at Google, you can have, probably three of you work at Google, but my sense is if you work at Google as an executive, you have a title that average people don't understand. And Seema's one of those people, but she's a great speaker, and she was really good at helping planning commissioners, I think, to understand some items about their role. So I'm going to switch into some slides of hers, and we'll take the next one. She also chose these beautiful little memes that you'll see on the right side in every one of these slides. Her first piece of advice is be sure to follow the rules. I think all of you are aware of the Brown Act that prohibits you from having offline discussions among yourselves, even in what's called serial order, where two of you talk and then one of the two of you talks to a third person. As soon as you get to three, in any configuration, even if it's not all of you together, you have violated the Brown Act. So you just need to be very careful not to do that. You need to be very mindful of due process, make sure that you don't form an opinion or publicize an opinion that you have about a project or a code to be adopted until you're looking at it from the dais. Make sure that you do follow your parliamentary procedures, they help meetings to work very well. Take the trainings that the city staff offers you and file your required forms in a timely manner. The big picture here is that you have to have a specific plan, and that's the only The big picture here is state law is actually not optional. You do have to follow all the requirements of state law. State law does now have a number of requirements about particularly the review and approval of housing projects that many of us find somewhat objectionable, but they are in the law, and you have to follow the law. It's as simple as that. The next thing from Seema is to always be prepared, and it's a lot of work to be prepared as a planning commissioner. I want to acknowledge that. Your agenda and materials could be, in some cases, you get 1,000 pages of documents about a single project. That's a lot of stuff to go through. But so reviewing the agenda and the materials is very important. Visiting the site makes sense, if there is a specific site. You should certainly go see it to understand it. If you'd like to do so, you can meet with the applicant, and you can meet with residents and community groups. Most jurisdictions also require that those contacts be disclosed from the dais when they happen, so you would want to make sure you do that. And when doing all of that, again, don't forget about the Brown Act, don't forget about due process, but do be prepared. Triage, the large packets you get. If you get 1,000 pages, particularly with 72 hours' notice, which is what the law allows, even if it's a week, it's a lot to go through. You may not be able to get through every page, but you can learn about how to dissect these packets and go into the really important pieces. Hopefully, every time in a huge packet like that, you have a staff report that gives you an overview that may still be 10 or 15 or 20 pages long, but is hopefully not 1,000 pages long. So you can start there. You can look at key findings of technical reports without necessarily getting into every sentence or every paragraph of the report. Every technical report should have a summary in it and should tell you its major findings, so you can look for that. Look at the design themselves, the drawings, to understand what this project might look at, and then do take into account public comment that have been submitted as well. But do, it's okay to think about this in a triage kind of way and make sure you're getting the biggest points all together. And then I want to mention just setting you and your staff up for success. As the nice lady from Schitt's Creek says here, "We're all in this together." And you want to really have that point of view. If you do feel a need to ask clarifying questions about a project that you think might be complicated, it's great to give staff advance warning about that, to let them know that you're going to have these questions so that they can be prepared. Similarly, if you have concerns about the project, and especially if they're concerned, say, about the adequacy of the materials or additional materials that you hope might have been, that you wished would have been included, let staff know about that in advance so that they're not caught off-guard from the podium when you're all here together. So letting folks know that, letting staff know that, is really important. It's also very important to be mindful of the burden that requests might make. So it's easy for me, you know, because I'm the principal at a firm, I'll often say, "Shouldn't we have done a noise study? Shouldn't we have done a traffic study?" And staff will say to me, "Well, actually, no." And my staff, they'll explain to me, "Why not?" And I need to watch myself, that I just don't say to my staff, "Can't we just go do this other report?" I need to listen, why has that report not been done? So similarly, if you all have questions and wish that some additional analysis were done, an additional report, something else, you might ask about that, but it's also important to understand that staff may have a good reason for not having done it. And then similarly, and the last item here, is to direct any communication you have about those items through your liaison on staff, who in this case, I believe, is Pugh, who's here tonight. If you have requests of the planning staff overall, go to her. She will then send them out to other places as opposed to going to a staff planner or a person who's reviewed the project. That person on city staff is not necessarily the person that Pugh would ask to address your issue, so all your issues should go through her, and then she sends them out to other folks. Next slide. And I think this, we're getting to the last one here, and this is about our personal opinions in decision-making. It's really important, again, to understand that your job, particularly not at the legislative level, but at that adjudicatory or current planning level, your job is to interpret and enforce the existing regulations. You actually don't have the legal prerogative to put different regulations in place or different requirements on a project. So you have to base all your findings on city regulations. You have to be objective. You have to be data-driven, and you have to provide very clear and solution-oriented feedback. That's the only way that the process can move forward. So you cannot be like the big Lebowski here who says, "Yeah, well, that's just like my opinion." You have to actually base it on the actual code and actual findings that you can make based on the code and the regulations that you have here in the city. And that is the end of my presentation. Thank you all for listening. If you do have questions, I'll be happy to answer them later. And for now, I'm going to turn it over to Barb, who's going to talk about much more complicated things than I just did.
Next slide, yeah, next slide, Pugh, or the first slide. So we have a whole section here in the housing laws because looking at housing projects is completely different from looking at every other kind of project that you might consider. By the way, you have to excuse me, I have a, I picked up a cold from my granddaughter. So if you're looking at offices, retail, whatever, as David said, if the project conforms with your ordinances and so forth, great. If it doesn't, you can make them change. Not, it doesn't work that way with the housing laws. The state has really limited local control over housing. I'm going to explain some of the ways. The state's passed a number of very complicated laws, and those really restrict what a commission and city council can do when they look at housing projects. So next slide. So I'm going to talk very briefly about state housing policy. I'm not getting into details about the housing element, but some key results of the housing element, a few key laws that affect planning applications and process, density bonuses, which essentially allow developers to do whatever they want with housing projects, the builder's remedy. The city has a couple of builder's remedy projects. I'll talk very briefly about these ministerial approvals, which generally have to be approved by the staff, and then talk a little bit about litigation. HCD, the Housing and Community Development Department, and how the courts have been looking at these laws recently. So the first area, just very briefly talking about state housing policy. And the state housing policy, as it applies to cities, is what I have highlighted in this provision of what's called the Housing Accountability Act. And it says, "The legislature's intent is to curb the capability of local governments to deny, reduce the density of, or render infeasible housing development projects." The state has passed something over 250 laws since 2017 to, quote, "solve the housing crisis." And some of these laws have to do with providing more money for affordable housing, but the majority have to do with restricting local government. The laws have not been terribly effective, with the exception of accessory dwelling units. That's been a very successful law, but the housing constructed in the state has actually declined since 2017. Nonetheless, the legislature is determined to do more of these laws, and at a couple of webinars I attended about new state legislation, they're talking about introducing 200 new laws. Okay. I won't provide anymore my views on this issue. Okay, next slide. So first of all, just talk a little bit about your housing element. Next slide. So cities have to update their housing elements now every eight years. Initially, it was every five years. And so when people talk about the sixth cycle, it means this is the sixth time cities have had to modify their housing elements. So this goes back maybe 40 years. So the amount, number of units, the RENA, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation, assigned to every city, was much higher in this cycle than in past cycles. So you see in the ABAG area, which Cupertino is in, it increased by 150%. In the Southern California area, it increased by 226%. Next slide. But Cupertino's RENA was increased over four times. So the city had to find many more sites zoned, had to find many more sites to create the capacity for about 3,200 more units. And they, basically, the city was required to increase the density on those sites. With a great deal of agony, it was finally approved by HCD on September 4th of last year. And it contains 48 programs with strict timelines for completion. And if the city doesn't comply with, doesn't complete those programs, HCD has the ability to withdraw its approval of the housing element, and many, and the advocates can file suit if the city doesn't complete the programs. So those, so there's a lot of pressure to do what's in the housing element, and it's quite lengthy. Next slide. So every site that had to be upzoned, we said that, the sites had to be upzoned to create capacity for 3,200 units. And then what we call reused sites, sorry, there should be another quote. So a reused site is a site that was mentioned in the last housing element but wasn't developed. So all of these are eligible for what's called by right approval. If they're 20% affordable to lower-income households and there's no subdivision proposed, then there's no, then the projects are completely exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and the city can only require design review based on so-called objective standards. Next slide. So a few key laws that affect the application and the process. Next. So in 2019, the legislature passed SB 330, which was also called the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. And in that, they allowed something to be, developers to file what are called preliminary applications. Sometimes people call these SB 330 applications, which I don't like because I'm never sure what somebody's talking about, but an SB 330 was a huge bill. But anyway, what a preliminary application does is it freezes the city's development standards as of the date that all the required information was submitted. And there's a list of information in the government code about what has to be included in these preliminary applications. And basically, they're kind of an abbreviated planning application with quite minimal information. But to maintain the vesting or the freezing of the development standards, a real application for the project has to be filed within 180 days. And then the applicant, once 180 days expires, the applicant has to complete the application within 90 days of receiving a letter from the city saying that the application is incomplete. Now, I wrote here, there's, it's, the meaning of this is the subject of current litigation. There was a trial court case in this, in LA where the court held that somebody can keep, so long as they resubmit every 90 days, there's no real deadline on getting a complete application. And HCD has also taken that position. So that's, anyway, most attorneys had thought you got one, once 180 days expired, you got one shot. But, in any case. But a preliminary application doesn't take away the ability for the city to do review under CEQA, under the California Environmental Quality Act. And you can apply, despite this freezing of standards, conditions and ordinances that would mitigate environmental impacts. Next slide. Some other key processing provisions is that, once an application's complete, the city must notify the applicant, must send the applicant a written letter in either 30 days if the project's 150 units or less, 60 days if more, if there's any inconsistencies with city standards. And if this, something is neglected or isn't in the letter, the project is deemed consistent. So effectively, once the staff sends this letter out, the project, you know, anything that this, that this letter found to be consistent, the project's deemed consistent with, even if the planning commission or council disagree. Now, if the staff said something's inconsistent, obviously, obviously, that, you know, that the applicant can argue, but that's city's position. But anything that's missed is deemed consistent. These provisions are all, they place a lot of pressure on the staff. They really limit the ability of decision-makers to change anything. Next, next slide. There's also a five-meeting limit. A project that's consistent with objective standards is limited to five public meetings. The only exceptions are, you can have meetings before the project's complete. For instance, there could be a study session or a neighborhood meeting held by the city. But meetings not conducted by the city don't count. Projects that require rezonings don't count. And the projects not consistent with objective standards, but, but under the way the state laws drafted, a builder's remedy project, a project that requires, uses density bonus, are all considered consistent with objective standards. Next slide. And then, and then the Housing Accountability Act, which is probably the big statute, allows a denial of a project or a reduction in density only if it doesn't comply with objective standards, or if it results in a specific adverse impact in public health and safety. And it's very difficult to make this specific adverse impact finding because, first of all, it has to be based on an objective, identified, written health and safety standard that existed at the time the preliminary application was filed. For instance, I've seen people submit studies saying that a project would have an impact on evacuation routes. But if the city didn't have any standards for evacuation time or for what evacuation routes would include, then that's not considered to be a specific adverse impact. You also, you need to have, one, the standard. You need to show that there is an adverse impact, and you have to show that the impact can't be mitigated, except by denying the project or reducing the density. Projects, as I said, are still subject to review under CEQA, but it's very difficult. If the project is considered to comply with the objective standards, it's very difficult to deny a project. Next slide. So density bonuses, next slide. So density bonuses basically allow developers pretty much to, I shouldn't say this, but I will, pretty much to ignore your zoning standards, your general plan standards, and the density that you've set up. That's how density bonus law is set up. Now, remember, this only applies to housing projects, doesn't apply to offices, retail, hotels, other kinds of uses. But once a project includes as little as 5% affordable housing, now, your affordable housing ordinance generally requires 15% to 20% affordable housing, so then the projects are eligible, then they're entitled to receive a density bonus of at least 20%, or, I'm sorry, if it's, for moderate, it's less, but for lower, if it has 5%, very low income housing, it can get a 20% density bonus. It can also get a bonus of up to 100%. It's allowed to get some, what are called incentives or concessions, between 1 and 7, depending on how affordable it is. Those are changes that reduce costs. So I've seen concessions requested for things like... So I've seen concessions requested for things like, the type, like, things like sidewalks, or undergrounding utilities, or various kinds of public improvements. Developers entitled to an unlimited number of waivers of development standards. Now, so that can be height, setbacks, open space, anything. You may have seen pictures of a project that at one point was proposed in San Francisco's Sunset District that showed a 59-story building in the middle of the sunset. That was proposed under density bonus law. There's, anyway. And so, so, anyway. So projects can request unlimited waivers. And a density bonus project, the way the statutes are written, is considered to be consistent with city standards, even if it isn't. I mean, even if really it isn't, but if it's entitled to waivers and concessions and so forth, it's entitled to be, it's considered to be consistent. Next slide. Also, developers are entitled to consider the highest density in a range as base density. So general plans used to be written to allow a range of densities, say of 20 to 60 units an acre, and some areas would be zoned for 20 units an acre, and some for 40, and some for 60. But as the density bonus statute is written, anybody within this 20 to 60 unit per acre area can claim a base density of 60 units an acre, even if their zoning is only 20 units an acre. And under the, under the density bonus law, they can get a bonus as high as 100% and get 120 units an acre. Next slide. So waivers and concessions, I think I explained what those were, waivers are modifications of standards, concessions result in cost reductions. One thing you're not required to do is to waive development fees or dedication requirements. Next slide. But to deny either a waiver or concession is very difficult. So you can deny both of them if what's requested is contrary to state or federal law, or if it has a specific adverse impact, which is the, which, you know, I explained earlier. You can also deny a concession if the city has substantial evidence that it doesn't result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. And you can deny a waiver if it has an adverse impact on property on the California Historic Register. Next slide. I think I already mentioned that if the city requires affordable units, they qualify the project for a density bonus. And so, since the city requires 15 to 20% lower or moderate income unit in projects, those projects are all eligible for density bonuses and all the other, you know, waivers, concessions, and so forth. Next slide. This was a project that received a density bonus. It's not as dramatic as the 59-story building, but basically, the city's height limit was three stories. And instead, you know, the city really was required to approve a five-story building. Next slide. So the builder's remedy. So, so I understand the city has two or perhaps three builder's remedy projects. So to qualify to be a builder's remedy project, the project has to have a certain amount of affordable housing. Before January 1st of this year, the project had to have 20% of the total units as affordable to lower income households. Now, the legislature has very much reduced that. Now, only 13% needs to be affordable to lower income households, less if you have deeper affordability. But also, the 13% only applies to what's called the base density, the density before the density bonus. So let's say, before that, you had a 100-unit project that was entitled to a 20% density bonus. So you had 120 units, and the developer would have had to provide 24 affordable units to be eligible for a builder's remedy. Now, only 13% of the base density, the base 100 units, need to be affordable, so that's only 13 units. Also, any project with 10 or fewer units on a site of less than an acre at a density of 10 units, an acre or more, is considered to be an affordable project. Next slide. So the builder's remedy comes out of these provisions. So I mentioned that to deny any project that conforms with all the objective standards, you have to make the specific adverse impact finding. And you have to make one of these five findings additionally to turn down an affordable project, you know, project that has 13% affordable. So the findings are, one, is that the city has really constructed all the housing that it was required to do under the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, which very few cities in the state have ever done. The specific adverse impact, compliance with state or federal law, water or sewer inadequate, or the project's inconsistent with the zoning ordinance and the general plan, land use designation. So let's think about a project maybe proposed on a site zoned for industry, right? So that would be inconsistent with the zoning ordinance and the general plan, land use designation. But you can only make that finding if your housing element's in substantial conformance with state law, and also if it's not on a site shown in the housing element for lower or moderate income housing, if it's consistent with the housing element density. So essentially, before the city got its housing element approved by HCD, the people who filed the builder's remedy argued that they, somebody could file a builder's remedy project on a site zoned industrial, say, you know, a townhouse project, and the city would not be able to make this finding. And so that's what the builder's remedy is about. Next slide. So if you don't have a substantially compliant, a housing element substantially compliant with state law, you can't deny a project based on lack of conformance with the city's general plan and zoning, no matter how egregious the lack of conformance is. Next slide. Oh yeah, this before and after, I think, believe this was in Santa Monica. So the before picture shows, you know, a project that was proposed on a site when the developer thought they had to comply with state law, and then after they switched to the second, to the second slide, next slide. So, so the legislature has adopted, effective January 1st of this year, modifications about builder's remedy. First of all, it sets up a base density, which essentially allows 80 units, you know, the city's no longer subject to the builder's remedy. But the existing builder's remedy projects can choose to take advantage of these, this new law. So it allows, the way it works, because Cupertino is considered a high opportunity, very attractive area, is that builder's remedy projects can be, have at least 80 units per acre on any site in the city. But the Cupertino projects actually don't exceed, or aren't even close to that density. But that can be doubled under density bonus law. Next slide. So what we say is it's very important for the city to maintain HCD's approval of the housing element. They can revoke their approval with no notice, although usually, as I'll get to later, they do give some notice of something they're unhappy with. But they did revoke Portola Valley's housing element with no notice, as I understand. I'm going to talk very briefly about these ministerial approvals. Next slide. So a discretionary approval, which you do require some judgment, deliberation in decision-making, like David talked about. And ministerial, you exercise no, you know, there's no exercising of personal judgment. The commission may never see some of these ministerial projects, which in some cases could be large. Many are small, like accessory dwelling units. But some big SB 35 projects, like Valco, the city does have SB 35 provisions that do require public hearings, but, well, let me get into it later. But what you can do is very, very limited at these public hearings. Next slide. So the major ministerial approvals, so SB 35 is a streamlined approval that allows, could allow quite large projects, as you saw with Valco, to be approved at the staff level. And then accessory dwelling units, which is the big success. The number of dwelling units constructed in the state increased from 2,000 to 20,000. Those have to be ministerial. SB 9 allows four units on single-family lots, those are ministerial. AB 2011 allows housing in commercial areas. There's a similar one for housing on religious sites. And then there's one that requires ministerial approval for subdivision maps for 10 units or less, meeting certain standards. Next slide. So for an SB 35 project, though, in Cupertino, it has to include 50% lower income housing. So you're only likely to get that if you have a 100% affordable project. AB 2011, and SB 6, which I don't think anyone's ever used, allow multifamily development in, where it may not have been permitted previously, but a developer could also elect to use it even if the city otherwise allows residences there. But it applies in basically retail zones. And all the, both of these bills have very quick timelines for the city to act. Next slide. And, you know, essentially here, the city may be required to accept and approve the plans with state law, even if they're inconsistent with the city's policies, and even if the community hates them. Next slide. So I'm just going to go talk a little bit about how litigation, there's a lot of litigation on these housing bills. Next slide. So HCD has an housing accountability unit with at least 25 staff. Most of their time is spent responding to developer queries. If a developer doesn't like a city's interpretation, they typically run to HCD. They also have a, quote, proactive housing enforcement unit, which has just started looking at city's housing elements and seeing if they've been implemented. They seem to get broader and broader authority every year. But typically, what HCD will do is they'll send a city a letter of technical advice. Now, one of my clients thought, oh, well, okay, it's technical advice. Hey, I disagree with your technical advice. They're like, no, it means do what we say. So they usually start with a letter of technical advice, although, as I said in Portola Valley, they didn't. And then if you don't do what they said, they'll issue a notice of violation. They can also refer cities to the Attorney General, and the Attorney General has or had a 12-person strike force that can act independently and go after cities on its own, even if HCD hasn't targeted that city. There's also a lot of third-party litigants. One of them sued the city when it, before its housing element was adopted, the California Housing Defense Fund. And they often, if a project's denied, they often will actually be the plaintiffs or join in the litigation. There's some statutes that allow them to do that. Next slide. I think the biggest concern about HCD's authority is that they can, quote, decert, they can withdraw their approval of a housing element if an action or inaction is inconsistent with the housing element. So if you fail, you know, if the city doesn't implement its programs, they can decertify you, or if you take an action that's contrary to what's in the housing element. And effective January 1st, housing elements are only consistent with state law if a court or HCD says so. Next slide. The AG can intervene, they have the right to intervene. If a city fails to approve a project after getting a court order, there can be a penalty. Berkeley was fined 2.4 million for not approving a project after receiving a court order. There's also a penalty of, possible penalty of 10,000 a month from the date of violation if a city's action is considered unlawful or arbitrary. Next slide. And generally, we found that the courts tend to be very pro-housing. There's a lot of language in the litigation, in the legislation, saying the burden of proof is on the city, the courts should act to provide the greatest number of housing, of housing units possible. So generally, we found there's very pro-housing, cities have been winning only in rare cases. And if a city loses, most of the time, you're liable for the other side's attorney's fees, defense costs are high in some of this litigation, and then the possible damages from the AG. Oh, and developers often allege that there's been a taking. Anyway. So it's not a fair, the scales of justice, I should change this, are more like this than like that. And I think that's it. Next, yeah. Oh, what's left for planning commissioners? Next slide. So you can use, there's a case that says you can use subjective standards to apply conditions of approval if they were adopted before January 1st, 2020, and don't reduce the density or deny the project. Now, there's some, in some cases, the statute says specifically that you can only use objective standards. But, you know, if it's just a run-of-the-mill project, also, you can often use review under the California Environmental Quality Act. But it's very, developers have gotten much more aggressive. They've realized that they don't necessarily need to be friends with the city anymore, cities anymore. We see very aggressive letters from developers, and I, from housing developers, and that's just the lay of the land right now. So anyway, with that, David and I would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you, David. Appreciate the session that went at a whirlwind pace. But, yeah, let's open it up maybe for commissioners. No questions? Maybe we'll give Commissioner Linska the chance first. No questions?
I've got lots of questions. So you said that SB 35 requires 50% affordability, right? So how did Valco reduce it to 33%?
They got a special bit of legislation that allowed them to reduce it to 20%.
Oh, now it's 20? I thought it was 33. Okay.
I think it's 20. I might, I may misremember.
I believe that there is new legislation in that realm of the law, so, but it is lower.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know it's lower than 50. I didn't realize it went down to 20 now. I thought it went down to 1/3.
I think the actual project, the approved project, is 1/3.
Right.
That's, yeah.
Correct, but new legislation allows them to go lower, I believe.
Yeah, the new legislation allows them to go lower. Also, the affordability only applies to the base density. Also, the affordability only applies to the base density.
Ah, okay, that's, that's the big change, okay.
That's why, that's why Valco's at 33% right now, right?
So.
But they can go even more.
Weren't there some SB 35 projects that did do 50, and not here, but I thought, some other ones?
Well, most of the, the studies I've seen on SB 35 say that most of the projects are 100% affordable projects, partly because there's a prevailing wage requirement.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. And you mentioned about you have to give the applicant a chance to, like, correct something that you don't like. If an applicant applies for a general plan amendment, do we have to say, well, we don't really like this, you have the opportunity to change it? Or we can just say, no, we're not giving you the GPA?
If, if the project actually needs a general plan amendment, that's a legislative action and you're, you can approve or deny. But, but the statutes, as they're written, often allow the developer to avoid the need to apply for a general plan amendment.
Okay, if, okay, this is a complicated one. If you, if they ask for a GPA, and you can say, yeah, we're really okay with the GPA, except we don't want you to take advantage of this other state law, like, you know, reducing parking. Or is it better to just say, no, no GPA, because we're not allowed to to do anything that would conflict with the state law?
I'm not, you know, I don't want to give that kind of advice, but the, I think the only way you could prevent the applicant from taking advantage of another state law would be through a development agreement?
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yeah, I wanted to underscore that, that you can do any, you, meaning really probably through your staff, can do any number of negotiations when there's a legislative approval in, in the mix. And then you can, in the end, come up with a development agreement or some similar agreement that allows you to make a deal. I wouldn't try and do that from the dais, I would use a one-on-one conversation with your staff and then see if staff can work something out and bring that back later to a commission.
Okay, and does SB 33 lock in impact fees? Sorry, SB 330, does it lock in the impact fees at the time of the preliminary application?
Yes, except for, let's see, unless your, your fee schedule provides for essentially automatic approve increases due to CPI or the engineering news record index. So you can, you can apply those kind of automatic increases, but otherwise they're locked in.
Oh, do we have that, the automatic increases?
Only for some fees. For example, the BMR mitigation fee does have something built in. The construction, construction tax has something built in, but not many other fees.
Okay, the next one, so builder's remedy can go as low as 13%? Does that override our 15 to 20%?
Essentially, yes, the only way you could apply your 15 to 20% would be if you have a preponderance of the evidence that the, that your affordability requirements would not make the project infeasible. And that's almost impossible to do, because you don't have the, you know, you don't have the financial information.
So how would we ever get to like our 57% affordability if we're at 13% or even 20%?
I mean, the state has essentially assigned cities lower-income housing numbers that are, you know, there's just not enough money to meet.
Right, so it's like every city will go out of compliance with the RENA.
Well, you're not required to actually build the units, but what it will do is that every city will be subject to SB 35.
Right. And I, wasn't there another change to builder's remedy that you can no longer go below the minimum density? Because there were a lot of developers that said, oh, well, I want to build townhouses, but I'm going to use builder's remedy to go below the minimum density.
Yeah, in Cupertino, it would need to be at least 15 units an acre. So they can go a little, but you have a much higher minimum density, right?
Only for some sites.
Yeah, I mean, it would depend what the minimum, but they can go as low as 15 units an acre unless they're near, they're near, I think there's a, something like a rail line, you know, something like a Bart line.
And what was the SB 9 unconstitutionality and what, wasn't there another bill that fixed that?
Yeah, I don't know exactly what's happened to the case. So there was a trial court case that said that SB 9 could not apply to charter cities.
Okay.
So it was limited to charter cities. Because, let's see, I think they said the purpose of SB 9 was to create affordable housing, but there was nothing in the bill that actually required affordable housing. So then when SB 5, I think it was SB 450, anyway, a bill was passed, was it this year? I'm getting confused. Anyway, this year, a bill, or in 2024, a bill was passed that basically changed all those findings to said, well, we just want more housing. So I'm not exactly sure what's happened to the court case, I know it was on appeal. But clearly that was, you know, that those additional findings were added to try to negate, you know, the lower court decision.
And then you mentioned the 48 programs. So what are the 48, those are not like sites for projects, right?
No, 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 they're all like zoning and other things. Pew and Luke can probably describe them better than I can.
Yeah, there's, there's a range of them, they have nothing to do, they're not site-specific. It's more things like looking at your fee schedule or anything else you could do to further housing production in the city.
And if I may add, this was part of the, the general plan annual report that was, that the commission saw. It does list all the programs and progress on them, yeah.
Okay, and what was the last one? I had one more, but I forgot it, I'll let other people speak and maybe I'll remember.
Probably insert a quick one. You talked about these laws changing over time, 200 new laws coming in and so on. If an applicant had previously secured approval and there were new laws that came into effect, are the laws retroactive? Or if they submitted an application to amend, would the law be retroactive in that case?
You mean in the new laws, would, would an applicant maybe want to change their project? It's possible, I mean, you know, every, every project's different. But yes, somebody could come in and ask for an amendment under the new laws. With the builder's remedy project, there's a specific provision that allows somebody with an existing project to change the project to take advantage of the new law, even if it, even if they modify their project by more than 20%. Usually, if you modify the project by more than 20% of the units or square footage, you lose your preliminary application. But they've, they've put that in to allow developers to take advantage, more advantage of the new builder's remedy provisions.
But let's say they've had their final application approved, and then maybe a couple of years later, we're looking at an amendment. In general, do you see retroactive applications of new laws?
I don't know, I'd have to think about that. Do I, you know, a couple of years later, well, let's see. I mean, partly it depends how long. I, I was just thinking about the wording of that, it just talks about a project that was, submitted a preliminary application before January 1st of 2025. So how long does the developer have to do that? Now, remember, you know, could they get an approval and then, you know, two years later, say, hey, you know, I was a, I, I don't really know the answer to that, that's what I'd have to say.
And you talked about 13% of base density as the new requirement for affordable units. And earlier you mentioned the base density could be the high end of the range. So when we say 13%, and let's say the range were maybe 30 to 60 units, is that 13% of 60 then, is that what the city could use?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because so long as the density is less than the 60 units per acre, it's all base density, yeah.
So the city could choose to apply the high end of the range and then require 13% for the affordable units?
If the project is only proposing 40 units an acre, only 13% of the actually proposed projects, I mean, proposed number of units could be required, yeah.
Other questions?
Oh, what, what was the SB 330 90-day litigation? Is that a city that's suing because the developer is using like 90 days over and over again, or what?
It was a couple of cases in LA where developers were suing the city.
But yes, they were, the developer said that they had the right.
Oh, to keep doing 90, 90, 90, 90, okay.
And the court agreed with them, with the developer.
Wow, okay. That doesn't seem fair.
Vice Mayor has questions?
Yeah, thank you so much for the presentation, it was really helpful. I had a question, two questions, one for David. You know, how have you seen cities sort of evolving their general plans? And I'm just curious if there's anything that, you know, Cupertino can consider, any trends?
Wow, that's a great question, and I don't know if I have an answer off the top of my head.
You know, just as an example, you know, I've seen, you know, other cities have sort of elements that we don't have, like, I think there's like an emergency preparedness element or something like that, I don't know if there's trends that you're seeing?
Well, one, I do see a trend to try and include a lot of things in general plans that honestly I don't think should be included. So this may be the, the opposite of an answer that you were kind of moving towards, but I do think there's a preponderance in many cities, like, I mean, not to name names, but I will. I worked on the City of Davis general plan 25, 30 years ago, and they had created a series of citizen committees to write the plan, and every committee decided it should have its own element. And the City of Davis ended up with 21 elements in its general plan. And what happens then is that they become internally inconsistent with each other. It's very difficult to track them all. If you make an amendment to the general plan, then you didn't remember that there was another part of your general plan that also addressed this issue. So I would argue to have fewer elements and actually to not, as one of my colleagues says, don't think of the general plan as a kitchen sink that you're just throwing everything into. I do think the general plan should be limited to the issues that are required by state law. In my own opinion, actually, probably there's more issues required by state law than really should be covered, but obviously you have to do those. But I wouldn't add more, unless you have, I mean, there are cities, like, I've worked on the City of Calistoga general plan. Calistoga has geothermal resources that are unique in the state, they have a geothermal element. That makes sense to me. But just saying, oh, you know, golf is really important to us, so we're going to have a golf element, which does exist somewhere in the state, I would not personally do that. I don't think that was an answer to your original question, but it's.
It's helpful.
I, I, I think the other thing, you know, to your question in terms of proactively what cities might do, I do think that we are in a period of time when, at least within California, concepts of sustainability, livability, walkability, and even housing provision are becoming more and more accepted. And many cities are trying to work proactively to undertake those things, environmental justice being another one of them. And, and it doesn't necessarily require a new element, but it does require that when a general plan is updated or when an amendment is considered, that you look at those issues. Are you making a more livable city? Are you making a more walkable city? Are you thinking about disadvantaged aspects of the community who might be affected? And, and really bringing those, all those issues into the discourse about the overall planning policy in the city.
Got it, thank you. And I did have a question for Barbara as well. You mentioned that there's the five-meeting limit for projects, and I was curious, you know, what are the typical or like recommended meeting instances or types that you usually would see if like some, if a city goes through five for a project?
I mean, you know, I'm sorry, the typical, you know, meetings are a meeting or two at the planning commission, and then either the project goes automatically to the city council or possibly there's an appeal. Now, the planning commission needs to be very sure that there's a meeting, you know, if there's going to be in a, if, the planning commission should never go beyond meeting number four, right? Because you need to allow an appeal to the council for meeting number five. I'm not aware if other commissions in the city typically review projects.
No, there, it's typically planning commission where your development and land use, there could be some instances with the housing commission on affordability. But primarily here, our approval process is administrative hearings, planning commission, and city council.
I mean, where, where I've seen the problem, there's some cities that had numerous commissions, you know, like, there might be a store commission and a housing commission or whatever, and then, you know, at that point, then some of those had to be cut out. But I think typically where there is a planning commission and a city council, you know, you could think about it as three meetings for the commission, two for the council, something like that. I, where I've seen cities get in trouble, though, is if, if a meeting has to be continued or if the developer asks to have the meeting continued. In that case, you want to have the developer waive, you know, you know, make some kind of formal waiver that the meeting that they asked to have continued will not count as one of the five. That's where I've seen the issues come up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? This would be a good time, Chair, to see whether there's any member of the public interested. Very good, we have members of the council, we have the vice mayor attending, we have other members of the public, anyone have questions? Feel free to step up to the podium, no questions? Are there any online?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, very good. Maybe we'll go back to another round of questions. You mentioned earlier that the specific adversarial impact is something very difficult to prove. Have there been instances where this has actually been used, and can you talk about them?
Well, I, I found about three trial court decisions in LA County where, you know, cities had tried to make the finding and none of them stood up. I think in two of the three, there was no standard that they were relying on. I can't remember why they, but anyway, there was no standard. The courts also criticized them because they didn't look at whether it was possible to mitigate the issue. In the third, in the third case, this was rather interesting. It was a issue about conformance with the fire code. And the court actually disagreed with the fire chief about whether the project actually was inconsistent with the fire code. So it tells you that you really need to have, you know, your facts in order. You need to make sure you've got an objective standard. You've got to make sure that you can show what impact it has on health or safety. And then you have to be able to say, well, and there was no way to mitigate it. I mean, in order to deny the project, because you could, let's say somebody requested a waiver or a concession for this standard. So you might be able to turn down the waiver or concession. But then the way to mitigate the impact is to require that the standard be met, right? So it's, it's hard to find, it's very difficult to find a standard. I mean, I, somebody once asked me to think of one, something about septic tank standards, you know, that, or water standards for a well. Anyway, those would be, those would be examples I could think of.
And you also mentioned the fire courts, and that's probably a good lead into, you know, with all the recent, you know, fire-related, highly visible incidents that we've had. Do you see fire regulations as still being applicable with some of these projects in terms of builder's remedy, for example?
Yeah, the fire, I mean, and, and I think with the fire, yeah, with some of the fire standards, I think, you know, you might be, yes, those might be one where you could make a specific adverse impact, but possibly not to deny the project, you know? Then the issue is just, yeah, you have to conform with that, with that standard. Now, if conform with the standard effectively denies the project, then I think, you know, you could say there's no real feasible way to do it. But I think any, any time a city is thinking about doing that, they really need to look very carefully and make sure that they've got the, the evidence that's required.
And then I guess another question in, in Cupertino, at least we have R3 zoning with different density ranges that might, you know, be 10 to 20, 20 to 35 and so on. Is a change in that density range from, say, 20 to 35 down to 10 to 20 considered a downzoning?
Yeah, that's considered downzoning, and you're not allowed to downzone below what existed in, on January 1st, 2018.
Well, except that you could, you could downzone one place and make it up elsewhere.
Yeah, you could down, you can, you have to do this at the same meeting. Downzone somewhere and then upzone somewhere else.
Again, I just wanted to add, in Cupertino, our density is all in the general plan, which a lot of cities have density in zoning and general plan as well. But here, like, R3 doesn't specify a density range, so you'd have to look at the land use diagram.
And so back to the point you just made, you have to downzone as long as, you can downzone as long as. you can downzone as long as you can upzone elsewhere. Have you seen a precedent where that has been done?
Yeah, I've, I've seen cities do that somewhat.
We've just done it on the general plan in Hollister. I mean, there are all sorts of other things. That general plan has been adopted and rescinded a couple of times already. But the basic draft does have quite a number of downzonings in the parts of the city, but an overall upzoning of several thousand units of capacity, so that was perfectly legal to do.
And was that done after an application was submitted? Because the applicant is eligible to lock in the, the density at the time of the application, so.
No, this was, this was just done citywide, and there were no, there were no sites that were downzoned that had a pending application on them. And I've used the word zoning. We're all saying zoning. It was actually general plan designation, so that wasn't the zoning, but it was a, it was a diminution of allowed development under the general plan.
Okay. Let's pause there. See if there are other questions?
Sure. A follow-up question on that. So did that impact their housing element then, when they did that?
No, actually, part of the general plan project was to try and identify adequate sites for the housing element, and we were able to do that.
Maybe I had another question here. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I, I actually didn't have any questions. I did want to thank you for the presentation. I think it was, it was very good. The amount of new laws was actually less than I expected. So that part's, that part's very interesting, but it's, it's actually great to have the refresher of, you know, the interpretation, you know, the quick interpretation of, of the changes that were made. Thank you.
I just want to clarify, though. If there is an existing SB 330 application or SB 35 application, there is no instance in the books of that location being downzoned or being approved for downzoning?
Well, you could downzone it, but it wouldn't apply to that specific project.
To that application?
Yeah.
Yeah, once an, once an SB 330 or 35 application has been submitted, it essentially freezes the land use designations at the time of that submission.
Unless they withdraw their application?
Right.
Right.
I'll probably throw in another question. You talked about ongoing actions as a part of maintaining housing element compliance. And sometimes we look at it as we've sort of, we've gotten certification of the housing element. We've identified the sites. We've zoned the sites, and we move on to the next thing. So maybe you can talk a little bit about what are those ongoing actions and how are you finding cities sort of tracking their progress on those?
You know, I, I, interestingly, I had a conversation with HCD about this, you know, completely separate, obviously, from anything connected with Cupertino. They indicated that they are primarily interested in activities where there was a specific timeline. For instance, I'll amend the ADU ordinance by December 2024 or something like that. So I think those are the, those are the programs that the city should, should focus on. Also, when the city got its approval letter from HCD, I believe it listed some programs that HCD thinks are particularly important. And I've heard HCD staff say that those are the ones they'll focus on.
Another example would be that, and I'm not saying this would or has happened in Cupertino, but if you have forty, fifty sites identified in your housing element, and those start developing either without housing on them or at lower densities than were anticipated, your overall supply of housing sites can dip below that threshold that, to meet the RENA, and then technically you are out of compliance. So if somebody notices that, then you could receive a non-compliance letter. You, the way to guard against that is you have to be tracking as development occurs and make sure if it's not meeting what you thought was going to happen on that particular site, you actually really immediately should look for other sites that you can designate to add those back in.
Excellent. And then maybe a quick question on overlay zones. Have you seen any cities use the concept of overlay zones to try and achieve protection of maybe an environmental corridor or maybe a retail corridor, or, or maybe even trying to preserve existing Class C affordable housing that is in danger of gentrification? So any examples of overlay zones?
I mean, there's lots of examples of overlay zones, and I suspect David could probably give more than I can. But I'm not aware of any adopted for that, you know, for that particular purpose. The states, for instance, if there is an overlay zone on a retail area to try to protect it from AB 2011, you know, there's some provisions, but there, but you have to have a specific plan that was adopted before a certain date. So in each case, you know, if you're, if you're intending to preserve certain uses and so forth, you'd need to look at what the intention is and see if it can be accomplished the way those statutes are written.
And is the specific plan then considered an objective standard, or is that a discretionary standard?
You have to look within each of the plans to see which standards are, are objective. So a specific plan could contain objective standards, but the kind of policies that people still are putting in general plans, like encourage projects to conform to the character of the neighborhood, that kind of thing, those just, you know, for housing projects, now you can use those still for offices, retail, whatever, but for housing projects, you know, they, they're, they become kind of meaningless. So, so if you're thinking about standards that apply to housing, I think you'd want them all to be objective if you're doing a new plan.
And maybe as a follow-up to that, are you seeing progress on objective standards across cities? Any, any comments you might have on objective standards?
A lot of cities are adopting objective standards. I think the frustration, though, is developers requesting waivers from those.
Yeah, and then that, we, of course, are working on yours to augment the objective design standards, so we're, we're going to do the best we can. There is a lot of emerging concern in the field about both that the, the standards are getting more and more complex and difficult to interpret and use, and at the same time that they're, in other cases, that they're, they're not really having an outcome that anybody was hoping for in terms of actually maintaining quality of, of development or of neighborhoods. So I, I think it is possible that there will be some changes to thinking about objective design standards, but my guess would be it'll be five or 10 years from now. I think that the system has to sort of play itself out and continue to be implemented. And at some point, you may see a desire at the state level to change these rules a little, but I think for now, we're going to continue with objective design standards. And really, the question that will face you as a commission, your council, and other cities is, to what is your balance? Like, you know, the City of Santa Barbara, as an example, I think many of us know that they, for many, many years, have had essentially objective design standards that forced the creation of this Santa Barbara mission style, the white stucco exteriors and all. A city like that is very happy to have objective design standards as a tool. They know how to use them, and they want to regulate things a lot. If you're not that city, and you are a city with more sort of generic architecture within it, then it becomes quite difficult to figure out what is the objective thing that I'm going to require that still allows for the wide breadth of architectural design that exists in my city. And, and that's going to face you. It faces lots of other cities, and there's no right answer. It's just that the more specific you get with those objective design standards, the more you're legislating a very particular outcome, which you may actually not want to have legislated. You may want to create more flexibility.
Are there particular elements of the general plan that require to be objective? I mean, for example, the mobility element, just picking on one for, for hypothetical sake.
Right. Well, objective design standard, just to be clear about this, it's a term of art that applies very specifically to the standards by which you assess a current planning project. And it's, and particularly only used right now in regard to housing projects, because that's where the law, the state law, talks about them. So you can make objective design standards for non-residential projects, but your, non-residential projects can, if it's a discretionary project, a non-residential project can be evaluated still with some subjectivity, where you can say, as a commission, you can say, I just don't feel like this, this new shopping building really fits with that, with the corridor, and I'd like to see some changes. And you can probably do that if it's a non-residential project and, and get some change made. You cannot do that with a housing project on that same site unless you have objective design standards. But those are, those standards would almost never be actually in a general plan. Those standards would be either in your zoning or more likely in a separate standalone document that is the document of objective design standards, either citywide or for a particular area, that you're going to apply to specific projects, probably only your residential projects.
Okay, and, and I guess that's, that's a good point in that the ODS is sort of seen as an overlay document. It's not sort of going in and modifying the existing general plans to kind of retrofit those.
Exactly, right.
Okay. And, and on those, on those same lines, if there is an ODS in place, does that then mean that approvals are ministerial and therefore we have no reason to be meeting as a commission and having these hearings? Because staff can.
It's really going to depend on the project. I mean, there, there are very few housing projects anymore that don't, that, that are only, that actually have a discretionary approval with them. It could be a general plan amendment. It could be a rezoning. But unless you have those things, I'm sure there are some exceptions, but mostly housing projects today are going to be ministerially considered.
You know, despite what the law said, I mean, I do see, I, I do see, you know, public hearings. Well, first of all, there's, a lot of projects are still subject to the California Environmental Quality Act. Secondly, you often see developers perhaps willing to make some changes to avoid public opposition, and because it's not only the city denying the project, but the public can also sue them. Even if the public is unsuccessful, it slows, can slow the project down by years. So I think, but I think there's a big push to expand the CEQA exemptions, so that may go away. Yeah, it's just, but I do, as I said, the developers are less willing to compromise than they used to be. But depending, depending on who the developer is, they may be willing to make some changes. We've often been defending cities that, that turned down projects where maybe it doesn't seem the city has a very good case, but the developers have often been willing to make a few changes to settle the case and avoid years of litigation. But that's kind of a sad way to think about it, isn't it? You just kind of wish that they would want the development to fit the city.
Other questions? Anything that staff would like to add?
No, I'd just also like to thank David and Barb for giving the presentation. I thought it was very helpful, very thorough, and kind of gave the commissioners a chance to attend a conference they weren't actually able to attend.
Yeah, I'd like to.
I, I also made a presentation, so you pretty much heard mine.
Yeah, I'd like to echo Luke on that. Thank you very much for a great presentation and staying patient with all our questions, and thank you to staff for making this happen. I think it's not something we do every year, and so appreciate your going out of the way to make that happen.
Were we required to have oral communications in a special meeting?
Coming up next.
Oh, oh, it is.
It's on the agenda.
I see, okay.
Okay, so if there's no further questions, I think we are done with this item. We want to thank you for your time today. And Madam City Clerk, how many cards did we have for public comments?
We have five speaker cards. Since we have a group, they can either each speak for three minutes or one person can be nominated to speak for 10.
I see. And would the group like to do five? Do we have five comments, or do we have one comment?
We have five.
So we're going to have five individual comments? Or one, we're going to have one?
Jerry, it appears that they're indicating that they will only have one comment.
Okay, great. And do we have any comments on the, on the remote?
I do not see any hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, wonderful. Would commissioners like to keep going or take a break? Okay, very good. All right, so the next item on the agenda then is oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law prohibits the commission from making any decisions with respect to matter not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, if we can have the first speaker?
The first speaker that I have is Pamela Hershey. Welcome, Pamela.
Chair, maybe we can clarify here. Is it 10 or three minutes? And, and so just to clarify, this will be one combined speaking session for 10 minutes?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Can I get some help for connecting the computer? How do I use it?
To connect the computer for the presentation?
For the presentation? Can you use this?
It's not going to work on your computer, but I'm not sure what to do.
Okay, I think I can use this.
That, I believe is it.
It's like this.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't think so. No, it's the display here. No, it's not about the computer. It's more about the connection. Yeah, that's, that's fine. I can handle it. And I think we also send the file.
I was going to say, can they join by Zoom? Maybe you can join the Zoom? They can send their presentation to Pio, maybe?
Yeah, I've never actually set this one up either. Is this HD? Do you have HDMI?
Yes.
This is the HDMI?
Uh huh. Yeah, from here.
Okay. It seems like that one, but it's not working. Is the video team available to help with this technical issue? Lindsay, can you communicate with them?
The video team says there's an adapter on the white table that we can use.
White table? Oh, okay, okay. Oh, there we go.
That one. Thank you, video team.
There you go.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pio. Thank you, Luke.
Now, can you hear me?
Yes.
Welcome. Sorry about that. My name is Pamela Hershey, and I'm obviously a Cupertino resident. And I thank you for your time, Chair, Vice Chair, members, and also city staff. Thank you for your patience. I'm here representing the North Portal neighborhood, which I've lived in for many years, and speaking for, on our petition for preserving the sound wall. As you can see, the first, okay, the first picture is of Auburn Drive, where they are presenting, opening the sound wall, that is through the Wolf Housing Project. This is the actual picture of the end of the street. The goal of this presentation is the petition for preserving the sound wall, the status of the petition, the background of it, and supporting fact. the status of the petition, the background of it, and supporting facts not detailed in the petition. If you could see the picture here now, these are houses that we've actually have spoken to every person. This is in-person handwriting signatures that we received, 525 signatures within three days, actually was over two weekends, but three days that we had received. We, this represents 2997 homes just in the Portal neighborhood. We did not pass, well, we have people that offered, pass Blaney, so it's Portal on. And if you know that neighborhood, this is the dead end, the dead ends here, which I live in as well. You had to be 18 years older or older. Some of the kids wanted to sign the petition, we told them they couldn't, it was very cute of them. So that is the status of the homes marked just in that area. The sound wall was built in the start of the development of Valco Mall in 1974, mandated by the Development Agreement, separating the North Portal Residential District from the Commercial District. Historically, there's been attempts to open the wall multiple times. As you can see, the red line is the wall that goes almost to 280, and it ends there, not quite onto Stevens Creek, where the old perimeter road was, is the end of it. Where, right, actually where I live. Yeah, the new developments of the Wolf Housing Project, between that and the rise, there's going to be 3,000 residential units. That's not the people that are there. That could be 9,000, 12,000 residents living in that area, depending on the size of the household. 57,285 in 2023 was the residents of Cupertino. As you can see, that number of how, of people that are going to live just on that corner, and this diagram shows it very well, is 10 times the Portal neighborhood. So you see the impact that we're going to have just across a wall. So, and it's 16 to 21% of all of Cupertino population. So what an impact, huge impact that's going to have on the city itself. We're taking on quite a bit of traffic and noise and congestion for the city in just that one corner. That's not including the 9.5 million square feet of office, office space and the 200,000 square feet of retail space. Oh, thanks. We're not opposing the project. We're just want, to everyone, the council members and city council and Eden Housing, to understand the impact that it's going to have on the neighborhood. So with opening the wall and any, any of the streets there, will even be more of an impact on us without even just dealing with that corner every day. It's a massive scale, let's see, due to the massive scale of the combined projects, maintaining the sound wall serves as a basic safeguard against significant changes to character, safety, and livability in the North Portal neighborhood. As you know, it's going to increase, cut through traffic, whether by vehicles, pedestrians, bikes. It's not just the people, it's going to be bikes, cars, everything included. I think so. The, the, the existing alternative connectivity option is the Tamian new trailhead has an opening to the wall, opening to the trail on their property, without opening a wall that goes into the neighborhood, which now they're looking at the end of Auburn Avenue because it's near their project of the four openings. So it's easier and safer to ride Stevens Creek. As you can see, there's barriers that the city put up already for safety. And they can, they can get to the trail a lot easier and safer than going through a neighborhood. Wolf Housing Project lacks significant housing parking. As we all know, each, each home does not have enough, there's not enough for one car for each one of the homes, so they are short car spaces. So where are those people going to park if they choose not to walk or ride the bus to work? Preserving the neighborhood, security, and privacy is important to us. Sound wall protection, the established covenant that was in place when Valco was first built. We ask the city to reject any proposal to open the sound wall and instead explore alternative solutions that support connectivity without compromising the neighborhood, safety, and character. We request formal documentation and enforcement of the longstanding covenant preserving the sound wall as recognized during the site's earlier development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pam.
Thank you. Thank you, hon, thank you.
Madam City Clerk, any other public comments or oral comments?
We have no speaker cards and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, very good. And I noticed we didn't have future agenda items, I guess. But maybe it was a special meeting and therefore, very good. So with that, we come to the end of the agenda. Thank you, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.